Okay, it's five o'clock. I would like to call the March 13th, 2018 meeting of the Planning Commission to order. I would like to welcome Cheryl Brown as visiting here from the Howard County Planning Commission. Glad to have you with us. Thanks for coming. I would ask everyone in the audience, if you've got a cellphone or any other device, please put it on silent so you do not disturb the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak to the board, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Thank you. First thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes from February the 13th.
Move to approve.
Any questions, comments, or concerns on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are approved. Director Sheilin.
Mr. President, we do have one continuance tonight. Item number five, case 318, development plan approval for Menards. The tax meeting decided to ask for a continuance until next month, so that case will not be heard tonight. So our first case to be heard tonight is case 2Z18, petition of Mike and Carol Willis, bar, restaurant, and banquet area, requesting the Kokomo City Plan Commission petition or recommend to the Kokomo Common Council for a change in zone classification from R1, very low density residential, to C2 medium to large scale general commercial and wellhead overlay and flood hazard overlay for property described as part of the northwest quarter of section 32, township 24 north, range 4 east, and lot 1, city of Kokomo Center Township, Howard County, Indiana, at 150 South Reed Road.
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there someone in the audience to present this case?
Mike Wills, my address 3556 west, 500 south, Kokomo, Indiana, 46904.
Can you just give us a brief summary before we go to the staff report? What are you going to do here?
We just would like to be able to open that business back up as a bar and restaurant and buffet facility, banquet facility. Basically, just use it for the same thing that was being used before, except we're not going to be doing any bingo. It's not going to be a charity gaming event location, bar, restaurant, banquet facility.
If y'all remember, this is the old grotto, and it's been, as Mr. Wilson said, it's been a bar, restaurant for several years. It's a private club, but they're wanting to purchase it now and open it up to the public. And somehow, it's still zone residential, which needs to be fixed.
Any questions from the board before we hear the staff report? Director Sheilin.
Staff report for case 2Z18, Mike and Carol Willis, requesting a change in zone classification for property located at 150 South Reed Road. The adjoining property uses and zonings at 150 South Reed Road are, to the west, C2 medium to large scale general commercial; to the east, R1, very low density residential; to the south, R1, very low density residential; to the north, C2, medium to large scale general commercial. According to the Kokomo City Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, this property is located just off the Kokomo boundary line in an area planned to be general commercial. Under land use goals, to encourage orderly and responsible development, to promote health, safety, and quality of life residents in the city of Kokomo. Relevant land use objectives are to remove barriers to redevelopment of vacant or underutilized commercial and industrial buildings, allow for a variety of low, mid, and high intensity land uses to better ensure that there are diverse opportunities to live, work, and play. The Howard County Comprehensive Plan designates North Reed Road as a primary arterial. A primary arterial is a street defined as a high-capacity urban road. The traffic count for North Reed Road is 43,900 cars per day. The proposed use of a bar, restaurant, and banquet area would not significantly increase traffic flow in this area. The requested zoning change is compatible with general commercials. Therefore, the staff recommends the Plan Commission forward a favorable recommendation to the city council.
Any questions from the board now we've had the staff report? Any one in the audience like to be heard on this case? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on case 2Z18. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. It now goes to the Common Council when presented by Councilwoman Janie Young. Director Sheilin, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next case, Mr. President, is case 3Z18, petition of Patrick Clifford requesting the Kokomo City Plan Commission petition or recommend to the Kokomo Common Council for a change in zone classification from R5, high-density urban residential, to C2, medium to large scale general commercial for property described as fair lawn addition, 46 feet, containing 0.08 acres more or less, city of Kokomo Center Township, Howard County, Indiana, at 1007 South Ohio Avenue.
Move to approve.
Second.
If anyone in the audience to present this case, please step forward.
My name is Patrick H. Clifford. My address is 1609 Cherry Hill Lane, Kokomo, Indiana, 46902. And what I'm doing is I'm just asking to the property adjacent that is south of my property to zone a commercial so I can be able to expand to put a new garage there or expansion in my building. And I'm right on Marklin Avenue, and I just want to go a little further south. And I just bought that property, it's pretty much a rundown building house, so what I'm going to do is maybe just destroy it and just build a building right there. That's what I'm asking for.
Any questions from the board before we have staff report?
I'm sorry, did you clarify? You said you were going to remove that building that's currently there from the home and then rebuild?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Thank you. That was here.
Any other questions from the board?
You're north of the alley, right?
Yes.
Any other questions from the board? Director Sheilin, staff report, please.
Staff report for case 3Z18, Patrick Clifford is requesting a change in zone classification for property located at 1007 South Ohio Avenue. Joining property uses and zonings are, to the west, C1, small to medium scale general commercial; to the east, LI, low intensity industrial; to the south, R5, urban residential; and to the north, C1, small to medium scale general commercial. According to the City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, this property is located in an area proposed to have general commercial and medium-density residential. Under land use goals, encourage orderly and responsible development to promote health, safety, and quality of life for residents in the city of Kokomo. Relevant land use objectives are to allow for a variety of low, mid, and high-intensity land uses to better ensure that there are diverse opportunities to live, work, and play; allow for a mix of commercial, office, and industrial land use to provide a diversified tax base. The Howard County Comprehensive Plan designates South Ohio as a local street. A local street is designed as a street, is defined as a street designed to provide access to abiding properties and discourage through traffic. The traffic count for South Ohio is 750 cars per day. The proposed use of a, actually, this is wrong, I apologize. The proposed use that Mr. Clifford has would not significantly increase traffic flow in the area. The requested zoning change is compatible with surrounding zonings. Therefore, the staff recommends the Plan Commission forward a favorable recommendation to the city council.
Any questions from the board now we've heard the staff report?
Would your structure go east and west as the existing?
My structure goes east and west right now. The building does, actually.
No, your proposed structure.
Oh, it's going to go south.
It's going to run north and south?
Pretty much, going to go along Ohio Street. Right.
Okay. So you're going to have garage doors on the?
Ohio Street side.
On the, okay.
And I propose to pretty much eliminate all the asphalt that I got on the Marklin Avenue side and put in grass there. Get rid of that asphalt there.
Any other questions from the board? Any one in the audience have any questions on this case? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of case 3Z18, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. It will now go to the Common Council when presented by Councilwoman Janie Young.
Thank you.
Director Sheilin.
Next case is case 6Z18, petition of Paul Wyman for Zion First United Pentecostal Church requesting the Kokomo City Plan Commission petition or recommend to the Kokomo Common Council for a change in zone classification from AG Agricultural to IS Institutional use for property described as part of the southwest quarter of section 34, township 24 north, range 3 east, Howard County, Indiana, containing 17.66 acres more or less at 726 north, 300 west.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Someone here in the audience to represent this case, please step forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Paul Wyman, 1533 West Lincoln Road, Kokomo, Indiana. I have the privilege this evening to represent Zion First United Pentecostal Church. In their efforts to rezone the property as described at 726 north, 300 west, for a better reference, it would be the southeast corner of Sycamore and Malfalfa. In this location, we have a mixed use. You have rural residential. There is some commercial properties, multifamily residential, and as well as across the street on the northeast corner is also a church. So we believe the zoning is completely appropriate for the surrounding properties. I've had several of the homeowners across the street have contacted me since the mailing went out, and when we explained to them that a church was going there, they were absolutely very excited about that. And so we would hope that you guys would find it favorable. Zion First United Pentecostal is an outstanding church here in our community. They have a 97-year history here in Kokomo, and this is a great opportunity for them to expand and continue to provide the great services that they do in our community.
Any questions from the board? Director Sheilin.
Staff report for case 6Z18, Paul Wyman for Zion First United Pentecostal Church is requesting a change in zone classification for property located at 726 north, 300 west. The joining property uses and zonings are, to the west, RR Rural Residential; to the east, C2, medium to large scale general commercial; and AG Agricultural; to the south, M2 multifamily residential; and to the north, IES Institutional. According to the City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, this property is located in an area proposed to become general commercial and low-density residential. Under land use goals, to encourage orderly and responsible development, to promote health, safety, and quality of life for residents in the city of Kokomo. Relevant land use objectives are to allow for a variety of low, mid, and high-intensity land uses to better ensure that there are diverse opportunities to live, work, and play; to allow for a mix of commercial, office, and industrial land use to provide a diversified tax base. The City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan designates 300 West as a collector. A collector is defined as a street designed to facilitate the collection of traffic from local streets. Also, it provides circulation within neighborhood areas and convenient ways to reach arterial streets. The traffic count for 300 West is 3,198 cars per day. The proposed use of a church would not significantly increase traffic flow in this area. The requested zoning change is compatible with surrounding zonings. Therefore, the staff recommends the Plan Commission forward a favorable recommendation to the city council.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience on this case? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of case 6Z18, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I want to thank all the members of the church. That's who all these folks are tonight, so I want to, you know, I usually don't get crowds like this at your meetings, so I figured you'd want to know who they were, you know? So I just want to thank you all for coming out tonight.
This case will now go to the Common Council and presented by Councilwoman Janie Young.
You know where they are now?
Yeah.
It's not, uh... No, I reckon.
You still feeling good?
Yeah. It's not basketball. We're at the company.
Well, you're supposed to feel like that.
No, I actually, I'm a little gray.
That's good. I do.
I'm already a couple steps ahead.
I can stand to sleep all night, and that would be...
Well, yeah.
Well, you ain't going to have that for the next...
You can go there after the next 40 years.
I have a six-and-eight-year-old asleep all night.
Six and eight.
I know. I'm expecting to be awake for the next five years. But this whole laughing, you should rest as much as possible, and I'm like, you're joking, aren't you? There is no way I can.
We're ready to go.
Director Sheilin, next case, please.
Okay. As previously mentioned, item number five, case 318, has been continued, so we'll move on to case 218. The petition of Jerry Dankie requesting development plan approval for Big Ben Coffee for property described as lot number 105 on 106 and RG Smith's fifth addition to the city of Kokomo Center Township, Howard County, Indiana, and a portion of a vacated street adjoining said lots in the west half of Vacated Phillips Street Alley and the part of the southwest quarter of section 25, township 24 north, range 3 east, city of Kokomo Center Township, Howard County, Indiana, at 1230 West Jefferson Street. And Mr. Johnson is here for this. Before we get into Mr. Johnson, I will say that last Tuesday night at the Board of Zoning Appeals, there were six small variances that were given to this particular development, therefore allowing us to look at the development plan tonight.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Wyatt Johnson, 555 Market Road, Tipton, Indiana. This is redevelopment of this lot. There are some parking in the rear of the building. It's at the northeast corner of Jefferson and Phillips. There is some parking off of Jefferson Street, some angled parking. You have, I think, a site plan, a utility plan, a landscape plan in front of you, and I believe that everything that came up at the development, or technical review committee meeting, has been covered, and I think that everything's in compliance with your ordinances.
This isn't something, can I?
Yes.
This isn't something I normally, we don't really don't have to look at, but that front, the outdoor seating has a canopy, is that correct?
Yes.
Unfortunately, Duke Energy does not show up to our plat committee meetings to provide a review, but it would be in the petitioner's best interest to confirm that there isn't going to be a conflict between the overhead utilities and the right-of-way and that canopy.
Okay. I'll make a note of that. Get with Crystal or somebody at Duke.
Call the 800 number and schedule an appointment.
Yeah, okay.
I also would like to make aware, come out at the BZA that the question was asked and the gentleman has presented the case. One citizen was concerned about being able to turn left coming out onto Phillips. They said they wouldn't have a problem doing that, but that's only as good as long as the sign's up there, so I'm letting you know that that did come out in the BZA.
I believe that the drive is far enough away from the intersection that that's not going to, that's not going to cause a problem. And it's really challenging to prohibit left turns out of there, especially with the alley being there. So it's something that we can keep an eye on and address in a couple of different ways if that becomes an issue, but I don't see that as being a problem.
Any questions from the board? Anyone in the audience have any questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote for case 2A18. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Director Sheilin.
Next case is case 4Z18, petition of Brian and Barbara Adams, house and garage, requesting the Kokomo City Plan Commission petition or recommend to the Kokomo Common Council for a change in zone classification from PR Parks and Recreation to R1, very low-density residential for property described as part of the northwest quarter of section 23, township 23 north, range 3 east, and a part of lot number 22, Walnut Estates, section 4, as recorded in plat book nine, page 77, in the office of the Howard County Recorder, Howard County, Indiana. This is containing 4.60 acres more or less at 3078 South 200 West. Mr. Johnson's here for this case as well.
Move to approve.
Second.
Wyatt Johnson, 555 Market Road, Tipton, Indiana. This parcel exists as a residual, really, I think, from a development that Reinhardt's did 30 years ago that was called Woodhaven, Villas of Woodhaven, which is a, can't think of the word, condominium project along Dixon Road. You enter off Dixon Road at the top of the hill to the south of Park Road. And there's a cul-de-sac there. This lot was near, or maybe part of it was, a sewage treatment plant before the Villas of Woodhaven was hooked up to the city sewage system. So it's a vacant lot, it's a large lot, a lot of it's in floodplain, but there is a substantial portion that we've identified where Mr. Adams can place his house. It'll be out of the floodplain, and the only, I think, thing he'll have to worry about is to remove the amount of fill from the floodplain that he fills with his driveway to access the house. Other than that, I believe the lot complies with your ordinance.
Any questions from the board before we hear the staff report?
So this is a subdivided lot already, or does it have to go through subdivision approval?
I believe this is already subdivided.
It's, yeah, it's already a subdivided lot.
Okay. So it has, does it have, I think it has access to sewer. I didn't look too hard. I mean, there are lift stations on the south side, but I prefer not to tie directly into the lift station.
Right. So I haven't really looked at that because I didn't think about it, because I know city sewer's right there.
It's right there. It's just a matter of finding the right way to do it, so.
Right.
I'm not concerned, not concerned about it, but it is something that...
I don't think, I don't think there's a tap there.
Is the house, is the house going to be on the south end of the lot, or is it on the north end of the lot? I assume it's on the south end of the lot.
Carry the house is going to be, see where I drew that circle? That's going to be real close, right?
It's kind of in the center.
That's about the only place that's not in the floodplain, so that's, they've got one spot to put the house, and that's it, basically.
Okay. Well, there's going to be some things that'll need to be looked at, sewer and driveway, where the drive goes.
Right, right.
We'll need to approve that separately.
Director Sheilin.
Staff report, please. Staff report for case 4Z18, Brian and Barbara Adams are requesting change in zone classification for property located at 3078 South 200 West. The planned use is a house and garage. Joining property uses and zonings are, to the west, R1, very low-density residential and IS Institutional; to the east, R1, very low-density residential and PR Parks and Recreation; to the south, PR Parks and Recreation and M2 multifamily residential; and to the north, PR Park and Recreation and AR agricultural residential. According to the City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map, this property is located in an area proposed for medium-density residential. Land use goals provide opportunities for community growth and development, which results in enhanced quality of life, a wide range of housing opportunities, economic vitality, enhanced recreation while preserving environmental integrity. Under relevant land use objectives, to encourage redevelopment and infill of vacant or underutilized buildings and lots, preserve the integrity and character of unique areas in our city, ensure adequate, efficient, and safe pedestrian and automobile access. The City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Transportation Map defines Dixon Road in this area as a minor arterial, which is a street that collects and distributes traffic to and from collector and primary arterial streets. The traffic count on Dixon Road in this area is 6,324 cars per day. The requested zoning change is compatible with surrounding zonings. Therefore, the staff recommends the Plan Commission forward a favorable recommendation to the Kokomo Common Council.
Any questions from the board now we've had staff report? Any questions from the audience? Hearing none, all in favor of case 4Z18, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. It now goes to the Common Council when presented by Councilwoman Janie Young. Director Sheilin.
Next, next case is case 5Z18, the petition of Gary Bittner for GKB Properties LLC, single-family condo-style residences, requesting the Kokomo City Plan Commission petition and recommend to the Kokomo Common Council for change in zone classification from R1, very low-density residential to M2 multifamily residential for property described at Sycamore Gardens, lot 11, 25 feet west subdivision, Center Township, Howard County, Indiana, containing 0.63 acres more or less, excuse me, at 234 South Dixon Road.
Move to approve.
Second.
Wyatt Johnson, 555 Market Road, Tipton, Indiana. Mr. Bittner would like to be able to put more than one structure on this lot, and I think it's conducive to that. It's in an area where the lots, the homes that he would put on there would be approximately on the same size lots as other nearby homes. So if you have any questions, other than that, I'd be glad to answer, try to answer them.
How many?
Three or four. Not sure which.
Well, some of these front and face Dixon, the other ones Maple, or...
They'll all face, they'll all face Maple.
Okay. And, yeah, we won't allow any, I wouldn't allow any drives.
That's what I figured, yeah. We wouldn't want one either.
I wouldn't think so.
And I will say, just for the board's thoughts, for the last three or four years, we've had several developers that have wanted to develop this corner, but each and every one of them has wanted to put something commercial on that corner, which at that point in time, I told all of them that my office would not support commercial on that, on that corner because there's too much residential there. So this is actually the first developer who's actually wanted to come in for the last several years and want to do something residential. So we thought it was a plus for the area.
Is this, is this planned, is this work planned by the current owner or a develop?
Yes. No, it's planned by Mr. Bittner, yes.
Okay. He was the current owner.
Any other questions from the board before we have staff report?
I would point out that there, I'm trying to look, there may be, there may be a sewer line across a portion of that.
Yeah, I looked, I wasn't sure what the GIS was right, but yeah.
I don't know, I don't know how, I don't think it's that far off, so that will need to be addressed if, if that is the case.
Right.
Any other questions from the board?
But there is sewer service to any, that fronts onto Maple, so it's not a situation where any sewer would need to be extended.
Just taps.
Right, just taps onto the existing.
Any other questions before we go to staff report? Director Sheilin.
Final staff report, thank goodness, for tonight. You're doing well, though. Thank you. Case 5Z18, Gary Bittner for GKB Properties LLC is requesting a change in zone classification for the property located at 234 South Dixon Road. Joining property uses and zonings are, to the west, R4 urban residential; to the east, R3 medium-density residential; to the south, R1 very low-density residential; and to the north, R1 very low-density residential. According to the City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, this property is located in an area proposed to become medium-density residential. Under land use goals, to encourage orderly and responsible development, to promote health, safety, and quality of life of residents in the city of Kokomo. Relevant land use objectives are to allow for a variety of low, mid, and high-intensity land uses to better ensure that there are diverse opportunities to live, work, and play; expand upon existing subdivisions and neighborhoods where possible, to provide additional housing options before expanding and creating new subdivision developments. The City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan designates Dixon Road as a minor arterial. Minor arterial is defined as a street that collects and distributes traffic to and from collector and primary streets. The traffic count for Dixon Road between Sycamore and Marklin is 14,849 cars per day. The proposed use of a multifamily home would not significantly increase traffic flow in this area. The requested zoning change is compatible with surrounding zonings. Therefore, the staff recommends the Plan Commission forward a favorable recommendation to the city council.
Any question from the board now we've had staff report?
I, I think I have one. These are all, is this the, is this the style? Is that, is that what this is in our packet?
Yeah, that's something he's looked at.
Okay, okay.
That's not exact.
Right, right, right. I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to understand is, these are, these are single-family dwellings...
Not duplexes.
Not duplexes, and they are for rent, so he will continue to own the property, or is he going to sell them?
I believe he's going to sell them.
Okay, at that point, is M2 the appropriate zoning if you're going to have separate, it sounds to me like an R5?
You can't have, you can't have more than one building on an R5 lot.
That's what I'm saying, but they're going to, but they're going to be sold.
I think so, yeah.
So, so you, can you have one unit on an M2 lot? So, so, can you have one unit on an M2 lot? That's what you're gonna end up with.
They're not going to be divided lots, though, they're all in the same lots, mind staying.
They are now until you sell them, right?
Yeah.
I understand that they weren't gonna be sold, they were gonna be rented.
Okay, so, I guess we'll assume that, but I, I'm, I can't definitively say that, but the zoning indicates.
Yeah, I don't know whether, whether M2 precludes that or not necessarily, but I don't know if that's the most appropriate use, if that is what is being anticipated.
Well, and I met with him once, I'm not, I may be remembering wrong, and maybe my assumption, I thought he was gonna sell them, but I think Greg may be right now that he, now that he refreshes my memory.
But if you, and I don't know what the, I don't know what the key, I'm trying to look out in the best interest, if, if he's saying, alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rent these, but, but eventually I probably wanna sell them, if I'm gonna sell them, I'm gonna sell one at a time, or I'm gonna sell all of them at once.
Right.
If he is, does it, does it prohibit, does M2 prohibit them from selling one at a time, or does it then become legally non-conforming? It's something I haven't, I can't say understand.
It would, well.
What would happen in that situation.
There will be a difference between selling and renting, obviously.
Well, yeah, I mean, an M2 zone would be, would be a rental unit, I would, my expectation.
Plus, 20 years from now, he may be wanting to get rid of all his rental units and may want to sell them.
Right, and, and if you sell them, you may not be selling them till one person, you may be selling three of them off.
Right.
And, and as long as, as long as, an M2's, as long as that, I would assume that would become legally non-conforming, but if, if there would be something that would preclude him from doing that, what, if, if it's gonna be 20 years, then he's gonna have a rental unit, so it's gotta be M2 anyway. But if it's, but if the purpose is to build one, sell it, or build one or two and sell them both at the same time, then, then does it make more sense to do a different zoning? And, the other concern I would have, is if, if the intention is to do that in the future, is there a zoning that allows him to, would allow him to do it now? Because if there isn't, I mean, you can't, can't pack a whole bunch of units into a, into an M2 zone and then sell them off, and now they become legally non-conforming as an R5, because an R5 isn't big enough.
Right.
Or R5 is, you know what I mean? The minimum is, is too big, so.
Yeah, well, there's some, there's some issues with making it R5 in terms of cost for the owner, because, and the county, as far as the county's concerned, I don't know, I don't know where we go in the MS4, but the county's rules are, if you do two lots, period, you go in the MS4. Well, that costs, my fee for that's quite a bit, just to do that, regardless of the size.
This wouldn't necessarily need to be a subdivision, if he was.
Well, if we do R5, he can only have one on a lot, so then we have to subdivide that lot into multiple lots.
Would you have to subdivide it, can you just do, do a meets and bounds off of the subdivided lot we already have?
It's a good question for Greg.
If you're, if you're gonna build in Howard County and Kokomo, you have to subdivide.
That's been the rule.
So, it'd be, so it'd be a.
Rule for 40 years, at least.
Well, but we've done, we've, we've done lots before where we do, I mean, we did all of Hunter's Cove, where there were two units on one lot, and then they, then they just go down and they split, it got split up. And there's, I mean, all of Willow Ridge has got, has got.
Those are all duplex projects, though, right?
Well, Hunter's Cove isn't, they're six feet between the lot, between the houses, but those are all individual. But I don't think they ever went back and, they didn't replat that, I don't think.
Well, we did a lot of duplexes where you put a property line down the common wall and divide it after it's a lot.
After, yeah, but.
But, but Mr. Sheilin, Mr. Daly before him, Mr. Boyce between them, they all said, you gotta have a subdivided, subdivided lot to build a house on.
Right, okay, well, I guess my, my concern is, I don't want to propose an M, or recommend an M2 zoning if, by the time it's all said and done, there's more, there's, it doesn't meet R5, or whatever the zoning would be, you know, that, that, that doesn't make any sense.
Well, I think he talked to you, didn't he Greg, about what, how to rezone that?
I've not talked to Mr., the only person I've talked to is Elaine.
Okay.
I've talked through Elaine at your office.
So, I guess I, I'd say that, that I misspoke earlier, that he intends to rent these.
The, the, but, the zoning ordinance in M2 just talks about multiple, multiple primary structures per lot. It does not define.
Right, and that makes, and that.
But it does not say anything about rental or, or sale.
Right, right, and, and you could, you would think only one of those, only, only one owner is gonna, I mean, it's not like everybody's gonna communally own one piece of property and, and, you know, I mean, something, somebody's gonna rent something if there's more than one unit on a lot. But my fear is, if that's not the intention, if the intention is that these are build it and sell it, I don't wanna, I don't wanna pack them all together and then have, that not be, not meet our ordinance because of how it got put together. So, I mean, can, I, I, I just, I would, I would, I'd like to have definition on that, so that we can make sure that we've got our, if, if, if they are gonna be for sale, that there's a side yard setback, and that, and that we're, and we're doing everything we're supposed to be doing, and, and getting it in the right zone. Or we can, or we can move forward, and then if it, but what I don't wanna see is that we, that we do this, and then, and then all of a sudden, is this gonna have to, if it's an M2 zone, and there's multiple units, it's gonna have to go through site plan approval?
No.
So, if it doesn't have to go through site plan approval, I guess I have, I have concerns about, about it not going through site plan approval, because we're not gonna look at it again.
I guess what I'd hope to have happen is that you guys go ahead and recommend to the council, I'll talk to Mr. Bittner before it gets to the council. If he's gonna sell these as individuals, we'll remove it from the council agenda, and come back for, to rezone it to R5 or 4, or whatever.
Could, could we make that a, a part of the motion? That way it's.
We have no control over that.
Well, we can't, oh, we have no, we have no control over the council anyway, I mean, we can make a recommendation that, that the, that the, this is, we make a recommendation that the council considers this as a part of our recommendation, I would think.
Do you have the information that's accurately given to the council?
Are they, are they in a?
Yeah, yeah, I guess, I, I, I don't.
What kind of timeframe are you, are they looking at Wyatt?
Uh, I don't know, but I'm texting him right now to find out which.
If you can't get an answer in the next couple of minutes, I would, I would like to see us, I would like to see us continue until we get this worked out.
So, it's like, oh, wait. If no other board members have any questions, I'm gonna take questions from the audience. Okay?
Tom Micklake, 2300 West Maple. To Mr. Strahan's point, thank you for that. The concern that I have, and I'm not gonna speak on behalf of all the neighbors, but there's six other houses that come into that short street, and it's a cul-de-sac, and it is a busy circle for turnarounds off of Dixon Road. However, when I look at M2, and I wasn't going to bring it up, because I was under the impression it was going to be condominiums and sold, but when I look at M2, the M2 says permitted uses are residential, multifamily dwelling, multifamily fair housing facility, which there is a strict definition on what fair housing amounts to. Every one of those homes in the back of that court, with the exception of one, are substantial homes. I'll put it to you that way, all right? This is and would be the only rental home in that block. If, and there are no other rental homes in that, in that neighborhood. That being said, condominiums, I understand, M2, I understand if it's M2 and not R5, but I'm hearing some confusion as to whether or not it's gonna be rented, or it's gonna be condominiums. And, in light of that fact, if it is in fact gonna be rented, do we get to rescind the zoning change that you're recommending to the council? Or is it up to the council then to rescind it? I know the council has final say, but I also know that your recommendation carries a lot of weight. So, all I'm asking is, I'm not sure that my neighbors, who have all been led to believe are gonna be condominiums, would really agree with this. I would personally not like to see apartments or residential units there. Condominiums, I understand, you have a vested interest in it. So, in light of the confusion, I would rather wait and find out for sure, because I'm sure the kids that play on that street and that neighborhood, the dynamics will change dramatically. And I've lived there 40 years, and I like it. And I get it, and I'm planning to stay another 40, God willing, but I want us to do it smartly. That's all I'm asking, okay?
That's what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? We have to get this out of the joint, please.
Jason Reeves, 222 South Dixon. Talking about that sewer, sewer line, I think it does run across that property that they're wanting to, that's why I'm really in big concern, it, it does cross that open lot there.
Yep. And, and, and that is something that, that the property owner, the property owner's due diligence is, the property owner's responsible for determining what facilities are on their property. It, I mean, we, we're on the locate list, so if he calls and locates, there'll be a big, right, well, there'll be green flags that go right down there.
Well.
And, and he'll have to get a, he'll have to get, no matter what, whatever would be built there, even if it was a single-family dwelling on, on an R1 lot, that, that they'll have to, he'll have to, have to avoid that, and, and the, as a part of the building permit process, that would be.
I just don't want no backup.
Oh, believe me, I don't, I don't, I think we've had problems with that line, too, which is.
Yes, 'cause you dug up my backyard twice.
Yeah, I, I, I remember that.
Yeah, so I just don't, you know, that's all I have.
Yep.
Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience?
Okay, so he responded to me, he's gonna sell them. They're gonna be for sale, so we need to withdraw this petition.
I think, I, do you know, do you know how deep the lot, the, the depth is on that? The width, I mean, I guess?
Seems like it's 60 feet, but I'm not bothered.
I mean, the, the, the width on, on Dixon, 'cause that's gonna be the depth of the lot, right?
Oh, Dixon, it's 110 or something.
It's 110 feet on, north and south on Dixon?
No, no. East and west. East and west is like 110 or 100.
Well, it's gotta be.
I don't, I don't remember, I was thinking 60.
It's 108 north and south?
Yes.
Okay, the minimum, the minimum, uh, lot area is 4,000 square feet for an R5. If that was, I mean, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, I don't know what we're gonna do with this, but, but that's, what's the width of it? I mean, the depth of it, 255, is that what that is? So, at, you could, in, in an, in an R5, with an R5 zoning, you could, it would be, if you did 50 by 108, you'd have over 5,000 square feet per, and there'd be.
Five, 5,000's the minimum.
4,000's the minimum.
4,000 for R5.
But if you were 50.
So, area-wise, you could do six lots, but the way that sewer comes through there.
The way that sewer is, you're gonna lose at least one.
Yeah, so you're down to five max.
At max, and that would be at an R5, and, and obviously, we'd have to, we'd have to rezone, we'd have to consider that rezoning.
Yeah, and I'm not sure the house plan he's picked out, that five, five would fit.
If even, if that even fits. But four, four seems, seems reasonable, and we may be able to go to an R4 or something like that, and at, at four units. Yeah, so.
So, anyway, I need to.
I think that's probably the most appropriate way of, way of doing it.
Withdrawing or continuing it? Are you withdrawing it or continuing it to the next Plan Commission meeting?
If we continue it, can we change it from, to rezone it to R5 or R4 instead of M2? Or do we have to have a new case?
I think, I think we can, I think we can continue it, and I, I think it'd have to be re-advertized.
Yeah, yeah, it'll have to be re-advertized.
All right, I, I'm asking to continue this case till the next regular meeting.
Okay. Move to approve.
I think I'm, who made, who made the original motion? Did I make the motion?
You did.
Angela did.
I did.
Okay.
So, I move to approve that we continue this case.
Right, you just moved to continue. Second.
You see the second?
Yes.
All in favor, want to continue, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This case is continued.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, I think I.
Yes. We'll make sure that gets started.
Director Sheilin, other business?
Yes, I just wanted to mention real quick, if you all remember, a few months ago, we did, we did a development on Ricketts and Union Street. You all remember that, we did a few, a few months ago. That, that actual development was accepted by the IHCPA, and had the highest rating of anyone in the state of Indiana. So, that was, that was good news, so we'll get some housing along there, and hopefully clean those areas up quite a bit. So, that was, that was great news, and there was, I think there was 17, there were 47, I believe.
Application?
Applications, and there were 17 that were, that got approval, but our certain Kokomo Advantex was the, was the best rated.
Yep.
So, just wanted everyone to know that.
That was the total development of?
Yes.
All the, there was different addresses, correct?
Yes, yeah, there were some on Union, some on Ricketts. Yeah, the whole, the whole development, yes.
Correct.
Do you have a?
We do not have a county meeting. Case got continued.
Next on the agenda is approval of claims.
Make a motion, we approve the claims in the amount of $24,886.31.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approval of claims. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Claims are approved. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.